Pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and Board of Education Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, June 3rd, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummins Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes. The public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one mission under God, the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Cassidy will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
Okay, first the vision. Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission. Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Cassidy?
Here.
Gadding. Holman. Crackey.
Here.
Pearlman. Ryan. Smith?
Here.
Snipe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Five present. Thank you, Mr. Ray. As you guys know, we have four members of the Board that are not in attendance today because they have prior engagements. I will entertain a motion to excuse Luanne Gadding, Dr. Siobhan Holman, Benjamin Pearlman, and Amanda Ryan from tonight's meeting. So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Cassidy. Roll call, please. Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Five aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Treasurer's Report. Mrs. Byrd?
Board President Snow, Superintendent Dr. Logan, members of the Board, the financial statements for the period ended April 30th, 2019 have been finalized and submitted for your review.
Thank you. Moving on to Superintendent Communications, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Snow, members of the Board of Education and those in attendance this evening, and those watching at home. I begin tonight's remarks by congratulating our state track and field gold medalists from North High, Nisa Thomas for the 100-meter high hurdles, and girls relay medalist, Danisha Lutter, Shamari Christian, Ebony Stingley, and Zorasha Knox. From Burke High School, the boys 400-meter relay champions, Keithon Beasley, Trevon Pink, Xavier Watson, Devon Jackson. Great event at Burke High School. Also congratulations, huge congratulations, to the MacMillan Magnet Center Monarchs. And these students returned home from Nashville this weekend after competing in the academic pentathlon, where our seventh and eighth graders earned third-place team trophies. This is remarkable, along with national third-place designations. MacMillan students took home an additional 14 individual medals, and way to go, Monarchs. I do plan to see you tomorrow. Lastly, congratulations to the entire OPS class of 2019. We have all here at this table enjoyed attending graduation ceremonies and look forward to seeing the remainder of our graduates at this week's commencement, including tonight, in about one hour and 56 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members. Moving on to our public comment. We have one speaker who has submitted a request to speak form. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each Board member gets a copy. As a reminder, we please ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is 5:05, and our speaker is Marie Sedlak. I apologize.
It's Sedlakek. It's Marie Sedlakek. S-E-D-L-A-C-E-K.
And your address?
1015 Williams Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the reason I asked to speak is to item number H16, which is your design firm selection for the new elementary school at 10th and Pine Street. So I understand I can speak at this time. And my only comments are these, that I represent a group called Historic South 10th Street, and it's a neighborhood advocacy group. And we are composed of members from the local neighborhood association, which is Dollman, and also Historic South, and also near south group as well, and other members who are not necessarily part of that group. We've been in existence for a couple of years now, actually, and our primary purpose is to advocate for the neighborhood when it comes to development in the area. And so we participated in the opening meeting that you had for the elementary school, and we presented a document to Jacobs, which is your facilitator for the bond issue, and we've also made that available to some members of your Board, as well as, I believe, to you, Dr. Logan. And a hard copy version looks like this. It's essentially a document that we've put together that addresses five different areas in our neighborhood as far as development is concerned. One of those is the elementary school. And our concern there is that the school that is built there respects the neighborhood, and we have generated a number of ideas that we hope would be incorporated in the design, or at least generate some discussion with a design firm. And also to that end, we want to make sure that the neighborhood has adequate representation when it comes to that design process. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us tonight. There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Crackey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any abstentions? Scene on. Roll call, please. Snipe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Five aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our legislative update. The Speaker announced, oh, Mr. Lindsey's here. Oh, okay. Sorry. The Speaker announced that the legislature will adjourn on Friday, May 31st. The last day to advance bills and final reading will be this Thursday, May 23rd. Just a couple items, I'll just update real quick, and if you have any questions, Mr. Lindsey is here to answer any of them for you. LB 289, it failed to gain enough votes to overcome a filibuster, and it's probably did this year, which is the property relief bill. LB 183, scales back taxes going into property tax relief credit fund, but does not impact school funding. So that's a good understanding that we have there. LB 670, opportunity scholarship tax grants also failed to gain votes to overcome a filibuster, so it's also did this year. LB 675, which contains TOSA, is a reduction in 25 million. It should pass final reading tomorrow morning. LB 147, student discipline, it was deadlocked, four to four. Senator Grony, the Chair of the Committee, has placed the bill on the floor and it will be debated tomorrow afternoon. Any questions from members of the Board?
What was 670 again?
670 is the opportunity scholarships tax grant credits, so the, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Oh, you're good. The Accountability Committee is on the agenda. We will be meeting June 10th, and right before our boundary workshop, which is at 6:30. Correct, Dr. Logan? Okay. And, Dr. Logan?
I want to recognize our principals who are in attendance this evening. Several of the principals, all of these principals will be switching schools with the exception of one, who's a brand-new principal. So Matt Williams, thank you for being here. Matt Williams is going to Prairie Wind Elementary School. Thank you, Matt. Dr. Carrie Rath is going from Miller Park Elementary School to King Science Middle School. She's tickled, too. So you see her smiling up there? And thank you for wearing your "I love public schools" shirt. Dan Heck is going from Florence Elementary School to Saddle Brook Elementary School, and he will have the distinct pleasure of also being the principal of his own children, which I think is fantastic. Jody Lenzer is going from Saddle Brook Elementary School to Dan's old school, Florence Elementary School. Congratulations to you, Jody. And lastly, our brand-new principal, who are going to Haze. I'm just kidding. We're excited. Felizidad es a la señora Catlet, la nueva directora de la escuela Spring Lake. She's our bilingual principal going to Spring Lake. So we're very excited. Muy emocionada de tenerle en esta escuela. Thank you very much. Those conclude my remarks. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
We would like to give you a round of applause. Welcome. That was a quick meeting, because we do have a graduation tonight, so closed session. Mrs. Cassidy?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel negotiations, real estate, legal advice, and potential litigation.
There's a motion on the floor to go into closed session by Ms. Cassidy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Snipe. Roll call, please. Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel negotiations, real estate, legal advice, and potential litigation. Let the record reflect, the Board went into closed session at 5:13. Thank you.
Do you think you're going to close session with us? Yeah, we don't need you.
Okay, meeting is closed. We've gone out of closed session at 5:52. Meetings adjourned at 5:52. Goodnight.